So it's a satellite.
Yeah, it's basically almost separate.
This.
Move the second to approve the account, the consent agenda in my favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, see if not motion carried. Okay, we open up right now for public comment if we have any. Yes, sir.
William Bowie, one zero seven four five, Jackson Road. I've discussed or asked a couple of times about the quilt. When I was in, we decided to take it down, get it redone, refurbish clean, that was way over two years ago. And I think I got a response, yeah, we'll look into it. That quilt doesn't belong in a zipper bag, it belongs on that wall. And I'm anxious to see it because it's been redone and I'm sure that Bonnie did a beautiful job is what I've heard. So I hope the board can proceed with that and get it hung back up.
I think we are at, I think we told her, go ahead and do it.
Yeah, we. At that, at the last meeting.
A few meetings ago.
Well, I brought up more than two meetings, but anyway, I just, I hope it goes back up. A lot of people did a lot of work on that in nineteen seventy six. And I think it should be hanging there. The other thing is, on the last meeting, my knee was bothering me, I didn't make it, first meeting, I missed in five years. Even though I'm not on the board, I still came to the meetings to do my report for Chicago. When I heard what happened, I thought, hmm, it doesn't sound right. And I didn't go to Bill or anybody or Greg and tell them what I saw, because I thought you're bringing up the meeting in front of everybody. The rules of the Caca Building Board, and Greg knows this, he was on the board four years not being on township board. You not have to be on a board to be on the Caca Board. There's myself, Jeff Eater, who you couldn't think of, Pam Burnsman, who was on it. But Jeff Eater took over after Pam, he was elected, he's not on their board. Jason Freeman works for the city, he's not on the council. And over the years, there's been many people that are on the township board that represent their township. They have, they have to be elected and nominated and elected, yes, sure. So there was two fallacies, the board is not made up. And I listened to the tapes and everything and, and Bill came out at first, yeah, we should, should probably be on the board. And at the end, he said, I found out today, you have to be on the township board to be on the building board. That was wrong information and the building board is not made up of all municipalities, board or city council representatives. So that whole vote was based on a fallacy. Now, Dale told me about this, he did not know that he thought the rule was what you said, that you had to be on the board, that's why he voted against it. I don't know about Vanessa, I don't know about Bill, I knew Greg knew, I don't know about Anne. But I think that whole thing should be revisited because it's not fair and it's not legal. And I think the public would not want to hear about all that, it just wouldn't give the board a good reputation. That's it.
Okay. Any more public comments? Yes, please.
Just listening to what Dwayne said, when I was here at the last meeting and you all were going through the list and assigning people. Such things just seemed off and I thought, did they even tell these people, give them the courtesy to tell them that they're getting kicked off from these committees? It didn't seem right. And then it gets worse when I hear this, so.
If I would have had texted, I could have told them the rules, but no one got.
I, I hope you do readdress a correct the situation, because you don't want to, you know, compromise your integrity.
Right. Thank you.
Oh, I should have been in Twinkie Beach, one one three five, really Jackson Road, sorry.
Any other public comments? See, I'm not, we're gonna move on to reports, we're gonna start out with the press report, Nanette.
And I know the month of November, I took money out of the money market, put it into one of the just meetings that we use, because the rates are, they're still around three point eight. I sent out twenty-two hundred tax bills, which will collect about ten million dollars in the local, each two hundred and sixty-eight thousand of the township. And ninety-seven thousand of the.
Does anybody have any questions for Nanette? See him on.
I, I, there's not really a addition in that. When, when do our, when does Thornton Farms?
May. One until May.
Oh, so long. Okay. I forgot.
Okay, it's learning Mariano's back here today, but he left the report. Pretty consistent. I know we have a couple complaints we have to take care of, but other than that, that's. Uh, Wade, right.
Uh, we don't have a December meeting, although we did have a nominating subcommittee meeting, uh, virtually. And I'm on, and I will get you, so I don't have any November approved, then I'll give them for next month's package. But we did, as a board, approve two more members to the wave board. One is from Manchester Township, rising Manchester Township. And the other one from the city, representing the Manchester area, uh, she's. Getting it announced. Anyway, she is the director of, like, not the senior center, but. Anyway, they, they were both approved for the board and these are the first people that have been on the board from the southern area of our service system. And we're still waiting for someone from the city of Chelsea and the city of Dexter. Chelsea and Dexter, or some X left. Other than that, I'll pitch you stuff the next month back.
Thanks. Any questions for Greg on the waves? Okay, three and nine.
That, Dwayne.
It's slowed down a bit. But permits, I talked to Jennifer today, it's awesome. Permits are still coming in, probably from, what an H I O, like, ex Chelsea, and the governor's got definitely a lot of, extra town hall. Uh, but overall, it was just slowed down because of the winter, but they're all doing fine.
All right. Thank you, Dwayne. Cemetery is Dale. Uh, nothing for incentives, okay. Patricia left her report, pretty much, they're gonna be closed on the twenty fifth of, fourth of December and the fifth. They got a pizza and books Tuesday, December sixteenth, four forty-five to six fifteen, Chelsea. That's about it. Uh, just that child, uh, Lima Township has seven hundred and seventy-five car holders for the library. Okay, that's Chelsea Library, Chelsea just by the, uh, planning commission, then that.
Yeah, we have a charter meeting, you know, waiting for a question. And they got new planners. Like again, they are concerned about their time maybe expiring, but I think they haven't.
Who was there? I'm sorry, I didn't get chat.
Any questions for Nanette? Okay, W D R, uh, B I, Western Washington Recycling. Uh, you know, thank you, Western Washington Regional Advisory Group. We don't meet until January fourteenth, we have to meet this month. And then I'm here on River Watershead, um, we meet quarterly, we're gonna meet in January. And then KAF. All kinds of, uh, resumes coming in for the jobs, the six positions. Got building options now on the house in Chelsea, uh, we're following through on that.
Where is that?
The house next to the fire department.
Yeah.
Now, there's an option on that, we're looking into it and so we'll know. I think by the twenty first.
So they use two sites, both sites and.
Well, just, just the on-site, the freeway road site, it all depends, that's an option. Uh, Bill's books, whole priest. Is the option and with, uh, but with the one in the, in the city, it gives you a different, uh, span, the whole fire department redo it. That's what they're looking.
That's what I mean, that is, it's the house right next to.
Right next to it.
So they would use the fire department site and that site.
House, yeah, just west of it. And there's some easements and stuff that are affecting it through Jiffy, but I'm sure once we get talking, they'll go away. That's that.
So you said they have posted for the six positions from where? They have posted for the six positions?
Yeah, they have, they just, they're gonna keep coming in like crazy.
I thought they said, though, they weren't gonna have the money till.
Oh, their, their money won't come in until summer taxes. But the, but the people are putting in for their positions, you know, right now. So. Okay, any other questions on KAF? And on Flurts Report?
Yeah, I have a written report, mention that, um, there are a couple things mentioned around, but within the cycle levels and not within the department level, but. Uh, notes there on why I have to be done, because I'm having questions, actually, that's, but I won't go through all of that. We do have an updated zoning district map, which I'm getting printed and we'll hang in the office, it's also available on the website. And we received the updated zoning ordinance book. Um, there were several formatting issues that I'm getting corrected, I think that's done and that's been loaded up to the website as well, so that includes the new solar ordinances and the revision of the chicken. Another request from Mariano was that all of the old ordinances, the standalone ones that are in various formats and some of those very poor scans be typed up and put in the same format, so Vicky and Cheryl are looking on that, they just got started on that, but that's one. I had a quarterly Washington office meeting on December eleventh. Where the tabulator manufacturer is gonna be demonstrating some new tabulators that we might have to purchase next year. And then we have the budget workshop with our township accountant scheduled for Wednesday, December seventeenth.
Oh, you changed it?
Yeah.
Okay, and what's Thursday, right?
It was Thursday the eleventh until the clerks meeting, which is normally on Tuesday, I have a schedule on top of it.
You must not have responded to the email.
I thought I told you it was me.
Okay.
So now it's on Wednesday. Yeah.
All right, any questions for Anne on the clerk's report? See him, okay, supervisor report, well. Some kind of meeting Wednesday. One of the things I think I want to do at the first of the year is change my schedule from what it is to, I want to go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Uh, looking at my twenty twenty-six calendar. With all these meetings and everything, they're hot fall on Tuesday. I'm a large majority of fall on Tuesday. And so I figured I'd just work on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Uh, la, 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 oh. I want to do a, Dwayne, follow, I want to answer your question on your, with the committees. Okay, when I first came in and, uh, the reason why I took so many positions and so many committees and board, it's because I feel it's very, very important. We commit a communication between whoever's gonna be on those boards. Um, that's what I talked, uh, Jennifer about and other people on boards, because I feel like they're having, I keep, the, the board always cannot wait until a month. If there's something that's important that needs to be brought up or, um, said on board, you're not bored. I don't care what it is, if it's Pappa, Western Washington County Recycling or what, but, um, that's one of the reasons why I felt, because I want to communicate with people that are on boards. I, that's the only reason, okay? And it's, um, to me, it's, I feel it's very important, because I, I've committed myself here, I've on so many damn boards. And I don't mind it, I don't mind it, because I feel that it's for the good of this township. But I want to bring that up to let you know. Because that was, I wanted to answer your question on that. Um, number two is, I'm still waiting for the survey. Um, cemetery, haven't heard anything back from Hyatt. The depot, I got a company, I've had people look at and say, no way, I've had seventeen hundred dollars. All the way down to nine hundred is the cheapest for cleaning that upper, um, space, um, I think they're gonna do it this week.
Oh, so you found somebody?
Yes. Um, I just gotta come up with a. Gas, may I ask that low? But that's easy, um. Uh, I went to the conference, I think I told you the last time, and oh my God, I, that, I. And everybody needs to go to those conferences, I met, I met so many good people and learned so much about what our positions are and what we hold and what our duties are. Um, I wanna, I was talking to Anne about it, there's another conference coming up in January. That I really want to get involved with, it's a lot on budgeting and, um, which is right around the corner. I left a message with Parker, Ellen, Ellen Parker. On the cemetery, because I haven't heard anything back from her in the, for the last couple of months, I tried to figure out was, have you, Dale, go by at all and seen any stakes? Red flags, orange flags, or did you put those, no hunting or.
I have no, I haven't gotten that yet.
Okay, all right. Other than that, that's.
Hunting, people are hunting there?
No, I just was. No camping, all that. But that's my report, um. So, anybody have any questions, I'm open.
That's a good question, Bill, are you responding to my public comment just then?
No, that's what I had, my, I wasn't responding to your public comment. It was, it was one of the reasons, I guess I should have said it at the last meeting when we did the committees. And.
Well, I just want to say, I understand your opinion, you want someone on the board, that's fine. But you presented the facts totally wrong to the public.
Well, that's what I was told, okay?
By who?
I was told.
Amanda and Matt both know that there's.
Guys, there's a.
I was just told that by somebody that I thought knew what they're talking.
No, but that actually isn't a gender.
Okay, so.
Well, you knew it, Greg.
Yeah, I got it, I did know.
I didn't say anything, I listened to the tape.
I'm just saying, whatever the situation is, and I've talked to Marlene about it, everybody, the communication is what our biggest problem.
And you can call me anytime, you know that, I've been on the board. I was in the beginning when it first started, I was a very question.
We're back in the meeting. But I just brought that up because that's one of the reasons a lot of things were changed last year too. And things were changed this year. That's basically all I have to say. Just continue to hold business with the wave three-year agreement. And.
Yeah, I brought this back because we kind of had conflicting motions in the past, the board had approved six thousand for wave this year, but then we approved the three-year contract, which started in October, with an October payment of five thousand dollars. Which would have made us contribute eleven this year, which we hadn't approved. I'm suggesting we make some modification, I think the logical one would be to actually start the agreement with them either in January or April of next year, so that ten thousand that we pledged to them for next year falls into our next fiscal year, um, budget. So I have an alternative contract, it's still a three-year contract, so it would be ten thousand for next fiscal year, ten thousand for the following fiscal year, which is what we had already agreed upon. And then toward the year after that, we can discuss whether it makes sense to go up a little bit, because I believe we were originally gonna do eight, or six, eight and ten, yes, I know, there's a typo on there. So my suggestion is, the alternative contract that starts in January with payments in April and October for ten thousand, ten thousand and twelve thousand for the next, for ten thousand next year, ten thousand in two years, twelve thousand and.
But this year then, yeah, per that contract, we did, we did pay ten thousand.
We agreed, well, we agreed to six thousand.
And what we'd already paid for, I mean, whatever the two numbers were, it came up to ten, is my recollection.
We agreed to do six thousand, but then we did the three-year contract that said ten thousand, but.
Well, the reason we did six is we'd already paid for in our fiscal year.
We'd already paid six.
Prior to that?
In this fiscal year.
And we paid, I thought we paid four, and that's why we just stopped at six. I think we go back and see, back originally, we paid four already before the three-year contract came up.
We paid six before the three-year contract came up, we had agreed to pay them six this year. And then it already paid, and then the three-year contract came up. And if we had paid half, if we had paid half of ten, it would have been five.
Well, I don't know, if, I thought we, whatever the number was in the motion, I thought ended up being ten. There was no half, there's no halves there, I don't, doesn't matter, we paid ten this year?
We paid six. Because.
Okay, nevermind.
No, I mean. No, I'm.
We do. Let's re-read this, the contract is for, what's our fiscal year? What's the wage fiscal year?
October. That's why, that's why I kind of. When we had the contract that we've already approved, I, did you sign it, we signed it, returned it?
No, because it was never, completely was all, always in draft, it never was.
So we have not sent a three-year contract back?
No.
Okay, that being said.
So.
We, we did agree to do a three-year contract, we did authorize that to be paid.
We had two, that's what I'm saying, they were conflicting motions, we agreed early on, when we were talking community emotion, that six thousand went away and we'd already paid that. And then we agreed on the three-year contract, and my, it was my understanding that that would start after, for the next fiscal year.
That's not the way it was written, I know.
Right, so that's right, the way it was written, it started in October. And we were meant to be paying five.
I don't know where you're getting the five.
Half of it, it was like two things.
Well.
Well, if we would have paid in October, then that would have been sixteen thousand this year.
Two payments, but I don't think the contract is read, but. Doesn't matter, you didn't sign it.
No, because, no, I never got.
Well, if we're still in, in agreement with three years, which we should be, because we discussed it thoroughly. This new contract, it's time to me, and I would make a motion that we authorize the supervisor to sign the three-year agreement dated December eighth, twenty twenty-five. With typo and five C fixed, uh, ten thousand, twelve thousand. And rescind the approval of previous contract. Even though. But we need to rescind it because we have it in minutes that was.
Yeah, but that one paragraph there, it says ten thousand and then twelve thousand.
Right, that was, I was just saying, that was the typo, I said it was repaired of, of five C.
Five C. So it will be ten thousand, then ten thousand and then twelve thousand.
I agree with that. Three years out.
So are we at a ten or a twelve thousand dollar contract?
Ten for two years and twelve, three years from now, three and a half from now.
For the calendar year of twenty twenty-eight.
Okay.
Which that point will have new board messages, but they don't want to prove it again, they don't.
So what do we go with seeing how the fiscal year was in October, we paid these guys back in September, August? So that was for the previous year?
We paid this fiscal year already, the six thousand that we approved. The way this is written, the first installment will be in April. Which will be in our next fiscal year, so just when we do the approved budget for our next fiscal year, we are saying we're putting ten thousand.
Wave will think they're getting five thousand in their fiscal year.
Right.
And six last, I mean, it's, we're like six months apart, so. Depending on whose books you're looking at, it depends on where it goes.
Well, I think moving forward then, everything should be fine with this.
They don't really care when they get it, as long as it, there we go. Anyway, that's my motion, to approve the revised December eighth three-year agreement with wave, with this correction in the typo, and to rescind the previously approved.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a second, I'm at?
Second.
Okay, so moving second to do away with, or just ignore the whole contract and just sign this. Yeah, and it's, uh, pay, pay, are we gonna pay the, the four thousand, isn't it four?
No.
Well, if we gave them six, wouldn't four thousand make a ten?
Well.
Ten is for next year, we're basically saying six thousand is what we approve this year.
And that's all they're getting for the fiscal year, they'll get this ten thousand.
All right. Moving second.
In our year, in their years, they're gonna get eleven thousand.
We're all in a different world. Okay, so, um, it is on the floor. It is on the floor right now to vote on it. On favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The non-motion carries. Let's get that signed and get that.
Yes.
All right, next going up is the data.
No.
No, we have the amended.
Business, the company of.
Community appointees.
We need an ex-community appointees. Okay. How do you want to bring it up?
So what's, what's being discussed and what was. Told to the board and everything Greg knew it, everybody else said it was not true, that he had to be. On a board, which there is previous people that are on it that are not. Council for city members. So. My opinion is that we revisit this vote. Because Dwayne has been on this for a long time now, and he knows all the things that is going on. And. Very current, he's, he's been part, he's been part, I mean, he was. I remember going to meetings and I was getting this was getting started. So. I think that he's, he's a good option to have for it, and. I, that's just what I feel, and I sort of appreciate the, the information that was read to us that was incorrect. After I asked the question, and I got frankly lied to. Yeah, I got frankly lied to. I watched it today, and he said he talked to somebody. That told him that, so somewhere down the line, somebody's lying to somebody about this board member. And I talked to many people that were part of this founding CAC up and told me that that is not true. So. I didn't know it at the time, I thought something was changed, but. People wanted, you guys want to slip this through for whatever reason, and. I feel that is wrong.
Okay, for one thing, you're throwing a big word around. Very offensive word. I get it very hardly.
Okay.
Why aren't you calling me a liar? You go right ahead. Okay, but let's get. I'm offended by that.
If it's somewhere down the line, somebody's lying.
Okay, so whatever it is.
Whoever you heard it from, whoever you heard it from, you can tell us.
No, I can't. I won't. I won't throw, I don't throw people on their buses, my friend.
I don't recall exactly, and I didn't, but I do believe that we, when we talked about that, I did remember that, when I was on that. On this.
Correct.
I didn't say that.
I think, I thought things had changed.
Well.
So.
That I don't.
Because, because that's what I was told. So I don't appreciate that, what I'm trying to say. And nobody said anything.
Again, I told you.
Currently, okay? That was years ago. Things changed. Okay.
Anyway, I just wanted to make sure.
And, and the board was wasn't willing to keep you on when you didn't get the trustee position.
That's right, I just, that, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear that I did state that.
You did say that, okay. But then I was told by somebody else, thinking that something was changed, going by me thinking that was truthful information.
Okay, so we're going to put it up to vote.
I think somebody needs to motion.
Yeah, you need to make a motion.
I thought, the way he was rattling, I want to go on some change.
Well, which make motion, but I would say that I don't know what everybody else said, but what I said was, I feel that it should be a more rep. Because basically, from what Bill said earlier, somebody on the board should be much more in tune to what's happening within our building department. A lot of larger townships have building departments that are. Within.
Well, what is the reason?
What I based myself earlier on, communication, commitment and communication.
So. I guess I'm, I'm wondering why we need to all communicate with the building department? And everybody knows that my dad is more than, Dwayne is more than willing to talk to anybody about anything. So that is something I'm not quite. Understanding. So.
Make a motion, Dale.
Okay, I move. To reappoint Dwayne Lewis to the CAC board. For the time. It. Is.
Make your motion. Anybody second it? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Aye. Didn't pass. Dale. Your preparation for last month's meeting was not, any words you wanted to expect out of the trustee?
Bill, it's not time.
No, it just.
What do you mean by that?
When you come in and you don't take the time to read the package of what's coming in here. And you just, you, you were on your phone with it, you had no clue what was going on.
Because I didn't have it back because you locked the damn doors. I can't get in there, and I was not there, I was there, not that late. So, sorry, I have a life. But, and that, that's what, what I'm here, I'm trying, I'm trying to. Work for people that are my age, but sometimes it doesn't always work. I don't have as much free time as retired people. Sorry.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. The data. Data centers and township ordinance. They're coming our way.
Anyway, I put this on because. Everybody's, I'm sure aware of what's going on in Saline and possibly in Powell. Because of that, a couple of townships, Pittsfield and Powell, have put more moratoriums on data centers until, on considering data center application. Until they can add something to their ordinance. I don't know if this is something that we want to consider, it's just. Nobody has expressed interest in anything in the township. I don't want to start any concern there. But this is just a proactive suggestion to say, we need to put something in our ordinance, our ordinance, so that. Do we want to put a moratorium on any applications, and do we want to direct. The planning commission to look into. How to put zoning around it.
Well, we need this motion to move for them.
Well, it's a question, yeah. Where, where do we get this resolution?
This is mostly what Pittsfield had, with a couple of distinctions.
So you put this together?
I put this together through the Pittsfield, by looking at Pittsfield and Powell.
That will be.
And that's fine, if we want to. I wanted.
I mean, I think it's a, it's probably a, a good proactive decision, in my opinion, to, to go ahead and at least do that. And have the planning commission or planner and take a look at it. And we see if it's something that we need to amend. Doning ordinance process.
So I guess there, yeah, there's the two parts. Do we want to direct the planning commission to do something, and second, do we want. To either put a moratorium on it through this resolution or after tapping with the attorneys?
Take, check in with the attorneys and then go with it from there.
I think we should just do it at the same pace, and then if he doesn't like it, we'll rescind it. You know, but then it'll be. Well. I, I'll make a motion.
Well, it's a resolution.
Well, I'll make a motion to offer the resolution, number twenty-five dash fifteen. Placing a temporary moratorium on approval of data centers. And direct the planning commission to investigate per the resolution. And also have the resolution reviewed by the town.
We have a second. I'll second.
I'll write this down. Motion of a resolution. And do I have the planning? And. Have the resolution reviewed by the town? Okay, very good.
Okay. Well, that was the motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Lewis?
Aye.
Havens? Ian Leifer?
Aye.
Flashby?
Aye.
Stupendy?
Aye.
Township roles and responsibilities and policy. What's that? Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, office blinds, I'm still. Okay, office blinds.
Well, I've measured the windows and. There really aren't any, you know, over the counter blinds that would fit it, so which is something semi-custom.
Well, the reason for the blinds is because sitting in the desk, and the sun is coming through, and you couldn't. Hit her computer, so. I noticed that they have across the hall.
All these years, all these years, all of a sudden.
Across the hall, they do have some window treatments, so it was suggested that we get some, Matt is willing to install them. And so we were just asking if.
What kind of, um, value are you looking at?
Well, we have.
Doing the south side, right?
Well, and not we should do all three windows.
If you're doing, I'm going to do them all, why wouldn't you do them all?
Right.
So they all match. It also gives privacy at night if everyone was working at the light turn.
So it's not to exceed nine hundred dollars?
That's what I, yeah. That's three of them at the window, like Vicki said, because they're super wide windows, they would have to be somewhat, something like that.
Matt can install them.
Matt's able to install them.
Installation can be very expensive, so he's willing to do it. It looks like it's money right there.
Take that as a building and grounds for these offices. I think you, it could be done.
Okay, I'll make, well, motion to approve the purchase of blinds for the office, for the office windows at a price of nine hundred dollars.
Move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Let's compare it for the round. Okay, moving on to new business, township role and responsible policy. In the past year, I've had the opportunity to sit on in several different township boards. Bosses, I mean, Baxter, Sylvan, Melendez. And I'm very impressed with what I see with the board members and how they all are in on it and get along great. And what I've seen. We need to improve on what we have, our, our board needs to improve. We have no policies on. Our job descriptions. So that's what we're going to work on, we're going to get. And I'm having a close, not a closed meeting, but a, a closed meeting, yes, for just the board, and we're going to develop a policy. No, it'll be, it's work session, just going to have a work session, we have it at the office. We're going to develop a policy, we'll have it, we have not, where we all know what the policies are, and where we all stand. The reason why we're bringing it up today is because we're going to approve this in January, and we want each and every. Board member at this point in time, just to take the time and look into what their actual job description is. And grade yourself, grade yourself on how you feel you're doing. Because that's what we don't want to talk about, we want to bring personal, I, this, this is a team. There's no I in team. I want us to work as a team. And that comes back to what's communications. And everybody that is possible. So, that's all I'm going to do with plant to seed, or in the future, and that year, twenty twenty-six. I want that to be our goal, is to communicate and be a team, a team. So.
Is this a discussion item?
Yeah, it's just a discussion. Um, we're open.
Well, a couple of things, I guess, on that. Does MTA have any kind of templates for various policies and things that we might want? I mean, it's not just a job description per se.
At the conference was policy writing and.
Or, I mean, do they have any templates for our kind of size township, you think? I don't know, and I guess also on that is, actually, we just went through some of that on wave, strangely enough. With our new directive, we felt there was lack of policies on a number of things. So we, I don't know if she's done or not, but we enacted like three different ones. So.
Do you have to develop those, the two we have outside?
There was some gas that was taken from, we can talk.
And to answer your question, I know MTA has policies, of course we do have, which has several policies in it. And then I also, one of the MTA representatives have a document of like sample templates.
I mean, maybe we don't need them all.
No, I don't think.
I mean, we don't have the public works department, the police department, so. Probably pretty simple, but certainly rather than reinventing them, or paying an attorney to do it, or a planner, or whoever the hell.
At that conference I was at, that's what I got, was policies and got the book on it and all that, so.
Anyway, we just enacted a few of them.
But I just want, the reason for this is discussion, plant and seed, so everybody. Want, I want everybody. To get along, I want everybody to work as a team. And I hope that could be a goal for twenty twenty-six.
Well, we may not always agree, though.
I know that, that's the best thing about it.
You don't have to agree, but you still have to work together.
That's right, yeah.
But do you want any sort of motion there about doing that, or?
Yeah, a motion to follow through off in, in January of twenty twenty-six, I made. Work session, maybe.
Okay, so we're not going to schedule it until the end, right?
Yeah, true.
Did you look that up?
Just now.
And we made a motion for four to. Create.
I think it's just. Create anything, just schedule a work session, guys. To discuss. Uh, creation, uh, creation of policy, possible creation of policy. Possible. Possible.
So if you're wanting to schedule a work session, we may, we may, could this be a creation of policy to the county?
I'll second.
Okay. I'll try and table those for the January twenty twenty-six, we're gonna have a work session amongst the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Motion carried, over and out.
I'll think this is correct. You don't think it's necessary?
Yeah.
And I think it, right, it's exactly right, alrighty.
Okay, any funny final public comments? Yes, me.
Nothing you said during your supervising. Said you value your meetings and everything, you wanted to change your hours instead of Mondays, Wednesdays, you wanted to do it to Mondays, Tuesdays.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday, but I thought the purpose of those hours, nine hours a week is to let the public know that those three hours on those three days you all will be there, they can come in and talk to you, so now you're really only working two days with the public coming in.
I'm working Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
You're gonna have the office open on Tuesday, Tim?
I'll be there.
Okay, then, if she's in on Tuesday, she only comes in on Tuesday, so, well, you need to, you know, if that's gonna be a new thing, leave the left in possession, so. Because I, I would think, okay, Tuesday, you know, the place in there, so I wouldn't need to go.
No, we shouldn't, absolutely, I should not go speak to public comment, but I do agree, we should definitely get it on the website.
No, don't get on the website and everything, the reason why I'm doing it is I don't get paid to go to these meetings, okay?
Sure you do.
No, you don't.
Have a good job.
Easy job.
It's my job, it's also, it's my job, okay? I go to meetings Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, okay? Sometimes I don't get home until ten o'clock at night.
Maybe you get too much in your plate.
No, I just gotta get her plate. Thing of it is, is I want to be informed on what's going on here. And with Eagle and Semcay, because we've got things coming down the pike here in this township that we're gonna need funding. There's grants available, and that's what I'm working to do.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
What?
What?
Public comment, sorry, I can't answer you.
You wanna help me later?
Okay, any more public comment?
Dwayne Lewis. I think proactive on the FAI institutions is a great idea. Because I think what Whitmer's doing is picking places that he thinks are rural but have a good grid, okay? Look, look where they pick, you know, Celine Township, Post St. Iver, Howl, Louis Townes, next is this county seat. And I'm afraid that we could be next, so just a little tidbit, before I came in, the news was on, the Howl, now, I talked to someone from Celine last night, I said, that's a go. That can't be stopped, even though we're protesting, I think I'm right there, unfortunately, but Howl was gonna rezone tonight at their meeting, but it came out on news and said the applicant pulled back to give them time for a moratorium, which is what you're asking for, I think, which I think we should do everything we can to keep them out, of course, I feel the same way about solar and wind and all that too, but that's aside the point. I, I think that's a real threat to us, Bill, to our A.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Area, it, it's five hundred seventy acres is what Celine Township is, they couldn't stop it, there's a lot of big farmers down there, they couldn't stop it.
I was just at a meeting today, and Don Dean's got the same thing going on down there.
So all in favor of that, and I'm gonna miss being on the building board, uh, I just think that, uh, I'm gonna keep up on it though, and, uh, keep, keep interested, because it all started at Terry Westner's house, and my job with Earl Eller and inspectors was so nasty to us when I was building in the nineties, and then, oh, builders, you gotta get, so we need to start our own apartment, Greg knows this, so I just want to see it to continue and do good, which it is now, so. Um, and I hope to pull this up next time, thank you.
And we know we've got a good electrical grid, because we put a whole bunch of really nice looking poles down.
Oh, yeah. And that's beautiful.
Progress, urban baby.
Now.
Okay. Any more public comments? See, I'm done.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.